We're all here today. We're here.
Mr. Chairman, did you also get the special meeting January 26 minutes in time? I know I emailed them out.
Yeah, that's right.
End of last week, so I didn't know if anybody had a chance to see those because you can also do approval of those as well.
Yeah, I forgot.
They sent an email.
Yeah, yeah.
They're sending out over here too if you need it.
Anyone need to pre-record memory on those?
You just need to add it to the minutes on the agenda.
So I had your special meeting January 26 and then I gave you this morning a closed session from your 12/22 that we missed on the last, at the last meeting. So approve.
Right. Okay, so we got the January 19, December 22nd, January 26.
Motion to approve the agenda that was presented.
Support. Have a motion, we have a support. Any discussion? Hearing a call for a vote on favor say yes.
Yes.
Next item on there is approval of the minutes from January 19th coming 23. I want to move that we approve the minutes as presented.
Support.
We have a motion, we have a second to approve the January 19th minutes. Any discussion? Hearing a call for a vote on favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion great. Now we got the minutes from the closed session, December 22nd, 2022. I'll okay motions for that one. There's a motion, now we accept the motion for 2022. We have a motion. We have a second to the motion, any discussion? Hearing a call for a vote on favor say yes. The last one is the special meeting January 27th, are there motions to approve that? Motion to approve. Hearing on January 27th. That a motion?
Support.
Support that, any discussion? Hearing a call for a vote on favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion very. Next item on there is claims accounts, Gary.
Finance bring up claims came in at $19,857.83. Electronic fund transfer for $59,978.95. Desk checks were $162,632.13 for a total of $242,468.91. Next motion to approve.
We do have a motion to approve.
Who was it that made the motion?
Gary.
Yes.
Support. We have a support that motion. Any discussion? Hearing a call for a vote, call vote please.
Ball sir.
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Hardees?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Haltier?
Yes.
Motion very. Okay, next item on their agenda is public comment, agenda items only, public comment, Hearing none, we're going down to treasurer's report.
Senator, Sheriff Kathy are currently out for training to the Michigan Association of the County Treasurers Conference, quote unquote, their line differences in the state and federal laws regarding current court cases. State Treasury panel speakers are there, pre-audits, cash handling, tracking of county monies, and so much more, she says. So she has asked that I kind of step in for a little bit. She wants to share that we've had great success with foreclosure prevention this year. The MIHAP, which is the Michigan Homeowners Assistance Fund program and other efforts from other entities have, you know, been a significant part in helping us get all that kind of taken care of for other people, resulting in many parcels not going to foreclosure and the cleaning up of past years, which is significant. We've got a couple of them that went back as far as '17 and '18 that we're able to take care of as well. As much as six years delinquent paid full and 16 years of delinquent parcels in the payments process area at this point, so it looks like we're heading forward there. More specific to our office, we do have a new employee, Peggy Molden Howard. So we're working on cross-training her so that we can increase our customer service and window service significantly. So at this point, I'm going to just step away and then when we get into some of the older business, there's things that she wants me to share with you at that point, but I don't want to sit here and be put downstairs by yourself. So if that's okay, I'd like to know.
Yep.
Okay.
Let's do everybody later.
Next item on, compters this week, support.
New information on the opioid settlement came in. We were held up on getting payments because there was an Ottawa County lawsuit, but it was dismissed. So we should see payments coming in for that $304,000, but it's only going to be probably about $50,000 we'll see and it could come as early as today. And then the rest of it will come in throughout the next few years. And then I also received notification that there's going to be a new class action suit starting with a few other manufacturers. And they want to know if you want to get ours. The state has signed on it and all the other counties around us have started signing on it. So we just need to, they're going to send the paperwork and ask if we want to be on that one as well. I don't know the total amount of funding yet, but preliminary, they say it could be pretty substantial. So, and I get the information from the new settlement, I can sign us up to add us onto that settlement if you guys are good with that. Any problems with getting on that one?
We'll get something formally decided for.
Yeah, they'll email the formal information over, but they're just giving you a heads up that this is starting the process, so.
Any objection to going forward on that when we get the paperwork?
Is that on the opioid aid as well? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, they're adding, what they're doing is they're adding a few other manufacturers, Tyvek and Allergan, and then three pharmacies, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart, so they'll be on the suit. We had a quote done for maximum security to look at, we talked to security meetings about the double doors going here because there's no fobs in the other doors in that back area. If they can move the fob to the double doors and then like reinforce those, so the employees can still get through to get mail, but just the general public couldn't just walk down there with our office doors open. We are looking at a quote right now, they said it would be $725, so I'm just letting you know that that's the quote that came in if you guys want to proceed with that. But that's where we stand with that right now. We'd also have to put a safety film on the windows there because you couldn't just use those windows because you could break right through them, so he would look at that as Next is the ARPA funding. It was requested of our building inspector to go and check out the furnace at the sheriff's department for ARPA funding. His current opinion is it doesn't need to be replaced and he need to do a thorough, more thorough investigation of it if it became a further issue. He said there's three furnaces out there. I guess the ARPA committee asked him to go out there and take a look at that, so that's just the information that he shared with me on that. The other stuff is all on health plans and we can talk about it, kind of how that is.
Any questions for your floor? On that maximum security deal that's back here, what time, kind of a timeframe are you on for doing that?
They had said that like if you guys approved it today, they could have it up for us by Friday. That soon. And then they also had told me that they could get the film for us or we could even order it if we knew somebody that could put it on there. And our maintenance guy said that he could put it on there for us, that that wasn't a problem. And he said it would roughly be about $100 for that.
You had mentioned before though wanting to know who was telling the hall. So was that a camera?
So we have, there's access to the cameras to be able to view and we had to set up, and then we talked with Randy about that, setting up a monitor in our offices so that we could see, that way we can see that there's people walking around out there. We don't currently have it on our computers, but he could get it set up for us on our computers. Other offices, I know district board has it set up on theirs. So we would probably have him set that up the same time he would do the lock if we decide to go that way.
What are you going to do, have a bell or something if somebody needs to go in?
But all staff would have, we programmed them to be able to get through it, so they would still be able to go get their mail with no issues. They just have to have their key fob. It was just because the only key fob was currently on Dawn's office door and we have other offices there that don't have any kind of security, they're just sitting wide open. And with the issue we just had, you know, it'd be nice to have that more secure.
And they said they'd take mine off my door and then they, we still do have all the door locks from what they took off and we put a regular door lock on my door again.
So we're talking maybe roughly $1,000. Where would that come from? Maintenance, I suppose. Maintenance or building repair?
Mayhem care maintenance is for the maintenance department. We have it. This was something that the judge talked about in the court security meetings quite a bit, about that door being locked down anyways, so it was one step going towards. So it'd be, it's going to be done in the future with anything, so this is just if we did it now.
Okay, so let's make a motion, is this a motion? Just wondering, the timing of the whole thing, if we don't do that, if we don't do something about it today, then our next meeting isn't until, you know, middle of next month.
Right.
Well, we're talking about it, I guess. What's anybody else's thought about getting it done more timely fashion?
Cost is just going to go up.
Yeah. We got it for the initial cost of $725 right now and then whatever the film costs to get on. Then having a bell installed of some sort, I suppose that's pretty minimal. Well, make a motion that we go ahead and have maximum, do the key fob setup and the maintenance guy put the film on the glass.
Okay, we do have a motion. I'll second it.
Anybody got any?
We have a second to the motion, any more discussion on that or?
Okay, let's go, a little more discussion, call for a vote. All in favor, say yes. You got to have a roll call.
Yeah.
Well, I guess we should have submitted money, so let's do a roll call on that.
Jordan?
Yes.
Hardees?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Haltier?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Motion very. Anything else?
Nothing.
Hearing the sheriff's report.
Good morning or afternoon, I guess. I'll try and keep it brief, I know we have a lot of topics. It may count currently as at 12:00. In two weeks, or February 9th through 11th is snow drift, so just to let everybody know about that reminder. It was a busy week for our office and it ended tragically with a fatal house fire in Lewiston. If you haven't heard, I commend all the first responders that did respond to that. It was obviously, as you know, it's a horrible situation where there's a child death and this impacted a family to where their six-year-old daughter had died in that fire. So that's been a struggle for the week. We have a, working with tri-township fire, they're scheduling a debrief that will be participating in this coming Thursday for the first responders that were on scene for that. And that's essentially all I have. I know we have topics coming up later in the agenda, so.
Any questions, the sheriff? Hearing an old business, redound to the LOU Union slash County, from where?
Received the draft language for the agreement for the union, we have to send it to the union for approval still. This came from our attorney, he wants the board to review it. You guys are good with it, then we'll send it through Mike Gerald at POAM to the union membership to have them review it and then once they've approved it, it'll be good to I have, I already been in contact with Sonia too to update the addendums, get the right language on those. Once this is completed, I'll send this over to her as well.
So the letter of understanding is what you're indicating going to the union?
I have a written.
Or the, or the addendums or both? Or is it something completed?
Just the agreement, LOU agreement.
Okay.
The addendums had to be worked on and we'll bring them in front of the board for resolutions.
Do you have the done?
Okay, so has everyone read this? Did they read it? Okay, I'll, any motions on that to approve or on the letter of understanding?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, we do have a motion to approve, support. Now we have a support, any more discussion on the motion? I don't see anything that we've talked about so far.
So your motion is to approve sending the letter of understanding to the union? Does that have to be motioned?
Yes. Okay, we need the union.
You need a second?
Okay, I guess so. Call for a vote, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Please, motion very. Healthcare, I hope we got health insurance, the next item on our agenda.
We had our committee meeting, what date was that? Last week, last week sometime, to go over all the plans. We met with the two agencies that were giving us quotes for new insurance. The committee talked and asked questions of both the agencies, what the different options and plans we could possibly take on. After a lot of discussion, we think that the best option would be to go with an HMO like we currently have and then to offer the POS buy-up option for, instead of using the PPO. So we don't have a huge amount of people using the PPO, just a small handful, they're using that. And they did a disruption report to check to see if they switched to the POS, if that would still be, they still be covered and they would be. It's a cheaper plan for the participant and for the county, but it's still offered the same benefit. The only thing is they have to basically name a primary care physician with the POS, even though they still have out-of-network services. The question of whether we were in compliance with the 80-20 rule or if we had to go to the hard cap rule. Valley Insurance checked to see what our hard cap would be and the current hard cap has been figured out at $564,405.33. That means that the county cannot, if you choose the 80-20 rule, the county can't contribute more than 80% of the healthcare, healthcare cost. And if the hard cap is, they can't contribute more than that hard cap amount. We are under the hard cap amount, but if we did institute the 80-20 rule, we'd have to start paying 20% as employees of the HRA cost as well, because that right now is not set up and that's the problem. So that would be a drastic increase to a lot of the employees. So if we, if we choose to stay on the hard cap option, we can make a motion to put that in our minutes saying that we want to use the hard cap option, then we can make, the employees only had to pay 20% of the HMO plan and then they can have the buy-up option. The plan is to hopefully get more people involved in the HMO rather than the POS, because the more people you have on the HMO plan, the better chances of our renewal rate not being 20%, 21% next year. POS and PPO plans are a lot more expensive. Priority Health will rack our prices up for us if we continue to stay on those plans, so they'd like us to see the switch to the cheaper HMO plan because it offers still the same benefits. Of course, there's a few people who need that out-of-state network, which is why they'd be allowed to do the out-of, the POS buy-up option. We did increase the deductible to $6,000, but we kept the employees whole, so they would not have any extra increase. That $6,000 deductible would be on part of county shoulders, we'd be taking on that extra risk with the HRA. Any questions on any of that?
We were miscalculating the 20% at one point and that was for the HRA, correct?
Right.
So, is, refresh my memory, how is that going to affect what we're doing with the plans that they suggested?
So with the plans that suggested, what we would do is we would have a motion that states were going to use the hard cap rule instead and then we can only have the employees pay 20% of the HMO plan rather than have to start paying the HRA 20% as well. Because that would be, if we had them go to, it was going to cost about 70, it's about $74 per single plan for the HRA cost and an employee would have to pay 20% of that every month if we did the 80-20 rule to be in compliance with ACA. So rather than our, put that cost on the employees and the county can afford to stay in the hard cap and not make them pay that 20%, it's a better option for the employees that they're not seeing at 20, they're not going to get a 20% increase in their insurance now. We changed the plans, they're, I think they go from $45 a month as a single to 54. It's not a huge jump like they were going to see.
And we did talk to two different insurance companies, providers, both Valley who we're with now and Paradigm. But it's the same, I mean, they're offering the same, same product, so the pricing's the same depending on what you take. And it looks like, they were offering some other things or suggesting some other things to bring our numbers down, but they're really not going to work for the union and for our employees. They would save, they'd certainly save us some money, but on the employee end goes up and the union wasn't going to be buying into any of that anyways. So I think Valley seemed to know what our particular position was better than Paradigm did, simply because they had worked with us for longer, so it's.
Yeah, Paradigm, yeah, Paradigm discussed the HSA action much more heavily and wanted us to go to more of an HSA. And at this point, we don't think we need to, sticking with our numbers of the.
What we talked about was, there's another option for an HSA tacked on where they can have their own health savings account. And for those who don't use a lot of insurance, it's a really good deal. And they, you know, you can put that money away in a savings account and use what you need of it, but that's not going to work for a lot of our employees. So what we had talked about was putting the plan in position with the HRA and the, what, the POS.
POS.
So perhaps next year, we may look at adding that as another option, but for now, we're going to stick with those two options.
But to do that, we would need to have the, you know, the, our funding, that HSA, you know, the board side of it, we would have to have that figured in.
So perhaps next year, we'll look at that.
Yeah, and it would come with a lot of training, like to switch somebody from an HRA to an HSA, you would have to do a lot of sit-down sessions with our employees, like help them understand the difference, because it would be a huge change for them in how they go to the doctor's office and how they utilize it. So we didn't think that there's enough time to even try to implement something like that right now.
Well, I know a lot of, with the HSA, a lot have to come out of the employee's pocket for the deductible. Like the employee would have to come up with $2,000 or $3,000 a year on their own.
Well, that's where we would have to fund part of that, that's what we were discussing. How we would fund it, either upfront or in contributions.
Was the cost to the employee was like huge to start up?
Yes, yes. And you have to pay it upfront. Like with an HRA, you take a risk that you might have to pay more, but with HSA, you have to put that money in contributions and upfront, which costs you upfront more.
We could revisit that as a later date. So we're kind of on a bit of a timeframe for getting March.
Enrollment, we have to get everything out for enrollment, they'd like to have it, you know, by the 15th of February so that they can have them in place for March 1st.
Right, right.
The committee seemed to be pretty on board with that plan, didn't seem there to be any issues. I don't know, Todd, if you went back, you had any issues when you discussed anything?
Yeah, I mean, the POS is very similar to the PPO. Your, you know, the HRA was a little higher, the doctors have to be the HMO line of doctors, but like she did the study and said all the doctors were both PPO and HMO up in northern Michigan, so it wasn't an issue.
Did she?
And it still, it still has a lot of traveling options.
Did she give us any new pricing for that, for that plan?
Yeah, for the POS.
It was in there?
It was in there.
It was in there?
Yeah, it was option D on the PPO side.
Oh, that's right. Oh, yeah.
But they compared the PPO with the POS.
And don't forget the credit that you're getting for staying with priority.
Yeah, by staying with Priority Health, we have a $25,000 retention credit that we weren't going to get if we switched to any others. And that will help offset those costs. So that's another reason why I'm saying go to the hard cap, because if we were going to use that $25,000 retention credit, we not charge that HRA to our employees, they're going to basically be seeing the same, their deductibles don't change, their copays don't change, their services don't change, and their HRA, they still have the full function HRA, they're only going to see a small increase to the premium, which is the best we could get done, and we're not going to have to increase anything because they won't have to contribute to the HRA. So by doing it this way, we can save our employees from having to hit any extra costs. And hopefully, maybe soon a lot of people realize HMO might work for them and maybe a little bit more that switch to the HMO, which will help us, help our plan overall because we can make a lot of savings and hopefully not get hit with a huge renewal rate next year.
So since our meeting is not until February 16th, you want us to move on next time?
Yeah, that'd be probably.
My concern is that you may need a resolution. I mean, if you want to indicate that you're going to do that, you may want to follow up and check and see if you need a resolution, because I think there is a resolution in place right now for the 80-20. It's been a number of years, but I believe I came across that in digging out some of my insurance stuff.
I did ask them, she said the only thing that you have to do is technically, I guess you're supposed to choose your plan, how you're going to do it each year, which we have not, had not been done. Every year, you're supposed to state if you're going to go with the 80-20 or the hard cap and she said you just have to have them basically motion in minutes, that way if ACA came back to make sure you're compliant, you showed in your minutes that you chose the hard cap for 2023, is what she explained to me yesterday.
Well, in that case, I would make a motion that we choose the hard cap for 2023.
Yeah, I'd second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion on that? Call for a vote, call vote on that.
Hardees?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Haltier?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Motion very. Okay, next, item on there are policies.
No, you have to choose the, you're going to. No, you have to choose the, you're going to go with those plan options. The HMO and the, with the six thousand dollar deductible, the POS, the six thousand dollar deductible buy-up. You have to make a motion for that as well, if you're going to do that.
I'd make a motion that we go with the option A, Priority Health, HMO, six thousand, with the option D, Priority Health, POS, HRA.
I'll second that.
What were your option numbers again, Mary?
Right, right here.
What, you said A and B?
Yes, it was, was option A, Priority, HMO, HMA, okay, six thousand. The option D was the point of service, HRA, six thousand.
Okay.
Got it down?
I do.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on the motion? Good, now, call for a roll call vote, please.
Edwards?
Yes.
Haltier?
Yeah.
Bolser?
Yes.
Draven?
Yes.
Hardee's? Yes.
Motion, Karen.
And just another thing on health insurance, because FYI, we had talked a while ago about life insurance for the commissioners and what it would cost. And after looking at the life insurance plan, a lot of you, if you hit, I think even at age sixty, anybody at age sixty, that life insurance policy that we have, it comes down to that you get like twenty-five percent of it or fifty percent of it, it just reduces drastically, and we pay for it every month for it. So in discussion, Valley and I were talking about other things we could do for commissioners if we didn't do the life insurance, is that priority would give us authority to, or not priority, sorry, standards would allow commissioners to opt into dental or vision if they wanted to, instead of doing the life insurance, and maybe add a cost share. So those are some options that we can do, even though you're not enrolled in the health plans. Those are something else we could do instead of life insurance, if you guys would like to look into more depth of that. They did give us the authority to go with that. You might get more use out of a dental plan than you would your life insurance cost, so just a thought.
Can you take a vote for that?
Yeah, I think we've got some numbers on that. Yeah, I'm not, never going to get anything out of life.
I know, it just seems like you're not, it's not going to be beneficial to you in the end. It's going to cut down drastically. Because it doesn't reduce drastically.
They paid big dollars for that, which is ridiculous.
And a dental plan is a good dental plan.
Those are standard one plans, I guess.
Mm-hmm.
We're down to Sheriff's Department, actually.
Are you doing policies now?
Okay, okay, let's do policies. I'm not sure where we're at in policy, but we're talking about what we're at.
We're kind of in the middle of stuff.
Yeah, well, I mean, we haven't did much on it. We went through about three or four things in two hours, so we haven't really got to there.
No. But Mary did bring up a good point, that she sent us the email on. I think, if you want to talk about that a little bit, Mary, I think that's a, that was a good.
Yeah, we didn't have a whistleblower policy in here, per se. We talked about the open door conflict, you know, at length the last time, and discussed how that was going to be handled for the routine issues between employee and department heads. But we need an actual, you know, we need to have something in there specifically for whistleblowers. And you had sent us a few options that had come from other counties. I like the simplicity. Do you remember where that one was from? It's one of those couple. But then you can just put in the wording from the state of Michigan, as far as that goes.
It's the statute.
Just read the statute, and maybe that's how we'll put out, we would need to do. Kalamazoo, I think it was Kalamazoo that had a nice, simple.
Yeah, I don't know where else we can go, I mean, we're going to continue. You know, when is our next?
Well, we haven't, we need to decide that.
Yeah, we need to send the next meeting on that. Maybe that's what we do.
Let's get through our agenda, get that back at the end of the meeting.
Are you not going, are you not doing anything with policies today?
Well, we may, I want to get through the, everything first, we may come back to it. We only got, what, three questions answered, or talked about three questions before, so I don't know how much we've gotten done today. But we'll, we'll return to that at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, we're down to Sheriff's Department.
Well, at the last board meeting, one of the discussion items was obviously the schools, the two positions that were removed from the budget for this fiscal year. And then I advised that the schools had submitted their grants for the school resource officers. So I did invite the superintendents for the area school districts to participate in this, because it is obviously a collaborative effort between the county and the schools. So I, again, what I'd like to see is us have that, the discussion on moving forward with reestablishing those two positions that were removed from the budget, so that we can facilitate getting officers in schools and be able to utilize the grants that these folks were hard in obtaining. This grant is, and all of them, because honestly, it's a school grant. Can't see a little bit, Todd. It's a school grant, so it's more theirs than ours. We collaborated with them in helping them submit it to the state of Michigan through Michigan State Police. So some particulars, they might be more fluent on than I am, but it essentially is a fifty percent match per officer. It is a three-year grant, so obviously, there is that, that kind of cap, that sunset clause on it right now, now, Lord willing, it persists, but it currently is a three-year grant, is what they ran it for. So all three school districts were able to obtain a very healthy grant, especially for student count. They did a good job, like I said at the last meeting, of identifying rural, less advantaged counties. So our school districts did a great job writing it and got very decent awards for these. So again, I'm just, I'm asking for the board to, I guess, work with us on trying to make this happen, to get these two officer positions reestablished within the budget, knowing that you have fifty percent from two of the schools coming back to that. So essentially, you have schools paying for one officer, and I'm asking for the county to pay for an officer.
I guess, Mary would say fifty percent, that gun, cars, equipment, insurance, government? Is that all included in that fifty percent?
It is, it is. So when we wrote the grant, the way this, and again, feel free to speak up if I'm out of turn here. When the grant was written, they asked for all costs for officers. So approximately eighty thousand dollars is what we worked up for officers. So like you said, Mr. Chair, wages and benefits. So the match is for wages and benefits, and there's, you're supposed to be allowed to utilize some of that funding for training as well. So sending officers that are going to national, which is National School Resource Officer Training, which is week-long, team training, which is generally two or three days long, you're able to utilize some of those matching funds for those as well.
But you're still, I guess, I'm still confused, how much are they going to pay? I mean, when you consider the car, all the equipment, the training, I mean, what's the dollar figure? You're talking eighty, eighty thousand, what's that cover? You just, the wages and the benefits?
Wait, yes, the majority is going to be wages and benefits, yes.
So what are we going to do, put a car?
Well, we're going to have to work together on that.
Well, but that's not in the grant.
That's not in the grant, you're correct.
That's, you just want to get double.
Yep, no, it doesn't cost, the vehicle cost is not included in it.
Okay, right.
Yep.
The grant specifically covers wages and benefits and training, if you write it in, correct? It covers fifty percent of the cost, and the districts wouldn't be using the officer every day, right? We've got about a hundred and eighty school days. So it's actually an advantage too, because you're going to get some road time out of it. I can't stress the importance of having school resource officers enough. This is my eighth year in Johannesburg, Lewiston. I've had, we've had calls in that have taken over twenty-six minutes to get response time because of where we're located at, from either county. I come from a district that I spent eight years in that had a school resource officer in the building, and it makes a dramatic difference. Building those relationships with kids is huge. We have seen an increase in crime in our region, there's no doubt about it. And having established relationships that way will go a long way to help.
And you already have one in Lewiston, correct?
I do not have one in Lewiston.
There's one in Burnham.
Hillman.
In Johannesburg, Lewiston, we cover three counties. So we cover Escoda, part of Escoda, Mount Morantzi, and Atsigo. We were able to secure an officer through the Atsigo County Sheriff's Department. He started full-time this week. I can send him to do, I can send him to do some education in Lewiston, but he cannot respond in Lewiston, because Lewiston is in Mount Morantzi County. Additionally, over seventy-five percent of our cases in Johannesburg, Lewiston schools that involve law enforcement, involve students that reside in Lewiston or Escoda counties.
I just, I'm Dr. Reer from Hillman. I'll speak for just a moment about the need for this. This is the biggest weight on my shoulders, is the security of my staff, my students. Out of everything else I do, this is the one thing that I lose sleep over. I've got around five hundred students plus staff, and I train my staff and my students every year. I really appreciate Mount Morantzi County Sheriff's Department for their support in that. And I go into my staff and I have to tell them that if it's my grandson outside their door, and we've gone into a lot of times, they're not to open that door. And as a grandmother, first, you got to think about that for a second. But I've got to take the whole school and their security. What we're talking about is the ability to do preventative, so that our adolescents understand the importance of this. I went to Hillman Board, and they committed to an officer whether I got this grant or not. So we see the importance of this for our community and for our students. I am grateful for the funding, because we don't have a lot of extra money. And if it wasn't for this grant, it means I had to decide between an SRO officer and a teacher. And it was so important that the SRO officer, my staff hands down, said, this is what we need for us to feel safe, for us to know that if something happens, we've got somebody there immediately, because we know it's, we know we're going to be the first responders. We know that. We know that, you know, I've had the conversation with my husband, they're going to go through me. I don't wear the armor and I don't carry the gun, but they're going to go through me to get to my staff and to my students. This is, this is so important. I can't, I hope my words are coming across this clearly. It's vital, it's vital to us, that this be done.
And I would say the same for Atlantic Community Schools. I'm Tony Souchek Superintendent. I mean, I've met many of you, so just introduce myself. Atlanta does not have an SRO officer. The grant itself came through, as the sheriff said, for rural districts with low enrollment, knowing that those districts are further away from law enforcement and also don't have the budgets to fund it. So it was a fifty percent grant. We're dealing more, and we have more requirements now than we ever have before the last two years or so, especially what they had last year, you know, with some of the shootings and such. We have, and we work with your, we've gone through a couple of minor, but the emergency manager, county's emergency manager coordinator, worked with him on all of our drills, on our safety plans. We work with the sheriff's office constantly on things in the school. We want to, what we want to do is build, we want to build relationships with the students. And the resource officer does that so much, that relation, so we don't have to have detectors and everything locked down like a jail. If we can build these relationships, it's so important. As far as Atlantic Community Schools, on the seventeenth of January, we received the a hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollar grant. That's for three years, that's fifty percent. If we break that down, just for Atlanta schools, really, probably it'd be a two-hundred-and-sixty-day calendar. We'd need them in the school a hundred and eighty-three days. And then the county, if they use them on the road, I guess it could be a nine-month job too, if you didn't want the road patrol. But these positions are required to be funded through the county, even though they're going to be in the schools. And then we have to have a memo of understanding with the county on how things are going to be paid, et cetera. So that's, if it was a full-year job, it'd be seventy percent to school, thirty percent the county. With the numbers that Chad was talking about, and with twenty-three hundred dollars worth of training in there, that comes to eighty-two thousand, seven sixty-eight. I understand there's other costs, you know, for equipment and all that. But how it rolls out would be sixty thousand, the school would pay, twenty-four thousand for the county, but the grant would pay half of that, so the school would pay thirty thousand. And I believe, I have to get this, I got to double-check this, if the county portion of it can be fifty percent too, and my feeling is it can be. So if that's the case, for this officer, it'd be twelve thousand dollars. And these are three-year grants, these are for three years, so that's what the...
I guess you're kind of losing, you talked about thirty thousand, twelve thousand. I guess, how much do you say you're getting a three-year grant?
It's a hundred and twenty-four thousand.
So if you divide that by three, I'm assuming that's what you're going to do, and this would be what?
Forty-two thousand.
Forty-two thousand a year.
Right. And so that would be, that would go towards the thing. All I'm saying, if we calculate that out, probably the county's share is twelve thousand a year.
Plus a P.
Well, I don't know, we'd have to calculate, it don't sound right, just twelve thousand to us.
Well, if, so if we go back down...
Because we're paying part of this too. What the school is willing to pay is not in, this is just the grant money. So, so we received a grant, like our grant was for a hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
I guess, the board, you're probably a little premature. I think the board needs to know exactly what it's going to cost us. And if you come up with ten dollars and fifty, a hundred thousand dollars, kind of all over the board here, you know, if we're going to continue the way we're going, every person gets a car, they're not cheap. So, you know, and they equip them, that, all their uniforms, and that's not cheap. So I guess, I think before the board make any decision, we're going to have to exactly what the school is paying, the grant's paying, and then we can actually look at it in dollars and cents. Right now, we're all over the board.
What I can tell you from our experience, we will not be partnering with Mount Morantzi County at this point in time. Our grant award was only for our Atsigo County position, although we applied for two. And what I can tell you, since we've worked out with the finance department in Atsigo County, how this works, the state's not just going to give us this money, right? They're not going to give it to us upfront. We have to pay for it, and then show that we, show, we have to apply to get that money back once we pay for it. So the process that we've developed is that the county will invoice the district. We have a daily rate, we've broken it down to what the daily rate is. The county invoices the district, the district pays the county, and then we submit for reimbursement from the safe for the fifty percent that they decided on matches. So your finance department would have to sit down and crank out all those, the minuscule numbers down to the dollar there. But the, regardless of whether you go with SROs or not, there are going to be emergencies at school that the officers are going to have to respond to. And if we don't have enough officers, if the three of us in this county, if something happens in this county, and all three of us have to go into lockdown and get an officer to each building, how's that going to happen?
And just to piggyback on what the superintendents have said, I understand that it does come in dollars and cents at some point in time. I guess what I'm looking for is commitment from this board to make this a priority. That's what I'm, that's essentially what I'm asking of this board, is to make this a priority. We know, like the school districts, we're not flush with money, and I appreciate that, and I completely understand that. But we need, what I'm asking for is kind of a deep dive into the budget, as far as saying, where can we make this happen for our students, for our community? This isn't something new and shiny that we're trying to obtain. You have three individuals that love their schools, their buildings, their kids, as do we, and we want to provide for them. They've done everything they can to try and offset that cost by going out and getting these grants, and I guess that's what I'm looking for from the board.
There again, we're getting back dollars and cents. I don't know what's the process.
Okay, my ask is, is there a commitment from this board to try and make that happen, to try and find those funds? I guess that's what I'm asking for. Can we sit down, can we create a committee? Can we do something to make this happen, so that it's not just something that gets kicked on the road? Because that's what I'm afraid is going to happen. I mean, not... I mean, Atsigo was able to throw one in there right now because they committed to, that we're gonna make it happen. And I, I understand, we need to do our homework and make sure we know what we're biting into. I appreciate that. I'm just saying, I want, what I'd like to see is something happen, something, a plan of action from here. Let's, again, if it's creating a, a committee and me and the under sheriff and a couple commissioners, April, or whatever this thing looks like, we sit down and start going to these school districts and saying, "What does it look like?" Uh, that's what I wanna see. I guess that's what I'm asking for, to happen.
You're talking about making a special board?
Uh, you could call it whatever you want, have it be the Sheriff's Committee, I don't care, yeah. Just something that, that allows for this conversation to, um, create something concrete and feasible that we can come back to the whole board with.
Dr. Rader, did you say you, Hillman had a difference?
A amount, our amount is, our amount is a little bit more, so, um, so you would get, I feel that once we do the numbers, and I'm not counting the vehicle, um, but based on what the research that I did in writing the grant, um, it's gonna cost about twelve and fifteen thousand dollars for you, in your part, for us to have somebody for a full year. And because our district's gonna, is committed to pay half, I've got a grant to pay half, and then that's gonna be about what it is. And if you're like me, benefits and salaries eats up my budget, that's the most, that's the biggest thing I pay, is benefits and salaries. So, you've got an opportunity right now for us to pay a good chunk of benefits and salary, and it's gonna help us all. We also have the understanding that if something happens, that SRO officer's leaving. They're not gonna stay in my building if there's an emergency in this community. Um, that was, that was one of the things that we sat down and talked about, absolutely, that's gonna happen. They're, they have a radio, they have a car, and they're going. So not only is this gonna help our school, it's gonna help our community. This year, I've had more positive comments about having an SRO officer present and greeting students at the door. Hillman Community School went into a lockdown this year, and every backpack was searched, every locker was searched, in the entire high school, the entire building was searched, and we found nothing, not a cigarette, nothing in that high school. That has never happened before. I contribute that to the collaboration that we've had with Mountain Heights County Sheriff's Office. That's something to be very thoughtful of as we're doing this. It's, it's so, it's so important that our students know that that presence is there and that we have a communication, a collaboration that we're working together. And it's preventative. I would much rather deal with a student and be able to coax them and coach them into making the right decisions than have to expel them.
So do you have a way already have, aid?
We do. We put an officer in place this year because our board committed to that before getting the grant. Um, we felt like it was so important after Oxford, that I went to the board and said, "It may mean that we don't have a teacher." I am writing a grant, I write a lot of grants for our district, I've had a pretty good track record of getting them, that they were willing to kinda give me the opportunity to do that. They were thrilled when we got the grant, that this is gonna be able to strengthen that as well.
The, the sheriff, he collaborated with the school, we didn't care a lot about it, but he, we knew he was collaborating. They come up with the grant paper, he just took one of his road officers and made him a school officer, is what he did, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, listening to everybody, I totally agree on how important this is, and I'm just wondering if the idea could be, um, considered that in order to alleviate the delay that would be caused by trying to hire two new people, because we know there's been employee and hiring issues, um, for the last couple of years, um, as far as people available to fill positions go. Um, but to alleviate that, could they, could, could it be considered that we put two current officers into the schools immediately and then, you know, see how that shakes out? They will be road, you know, patrol in summer, and I don't know about, uh, um, holidays or whatever, I, I have no idea how that, you know, that works, but it's just an idea, just a thought, that perhaps, like I said, we could fill those positions immediately because of the importance of it, and then backfill the others at a later date.
Well, sheriff's got the right to put officers in schools and not put them in schools. I mean, they, he's, he totally controls what the officers do, so I, I can't speak for the sheriff, so.
Yeah, and, and obviously.
Just a thought.
Yeah, no, and it's a good thought. There's not, you know, ergonomically and labor, the, the amount of officers we have on, don't facilitate having an officer dedicated to each school, that we don't, we don't have personnel. I mean, right now, we currently have, you know, two, two officers on, three, I guess we'll say. You know, for them to be dedicated to the school means there's technically no response. They try to stop in, um, to, to our, to our school districts that don't have a designated SRO, they try to do their very best to stop in, um, beginning of the days, or at least be present, um, stop in throughout the days. So, we, we make a presence in the school districts as much as possible as we can, but to dedicate them in, a school resource officer is, is a, is a unicorn. I mean, it's, it's an awesome thing, like Dr. Rader said, it's something that is, it's, it's preventative, it's, it's relationship building, it's coaching, it's mentoring, it's teaching, there's everything that goes into that position beyond just a uniform or an officer in the school. That's a special, special, special thing. We don't have the capacity to put an officer in a school right now. That's why, I guess, you, you hear the urgency from myself and, and the superintendent saying, you know, if we can commit to this, to the treasurer's point, hiring is a remarkable difficulty right now for anybody, especially in law enforcement, so the sooner we predict, we, we proceed ahead and say, "Yes, we're committed to making this happen," we can start posting it and, and, you know, hopefully trying to fill these positions as soon as we can.
Yeah, I guess my thought process, I mean, I, mine's the overall budget and continuance down the road. We've got more officers now than anyone around us, deputies. We've got more cars than anyone in the area, we got twenty-one cars. And to keep that going, along with adding two more officers, when we don't know the value, I don't know if we can commit to that.
Well, I, I guess if, if we're, if we wanna sit down and start getting, um, specs and specifics from each and every agency around us, let's do that. That sounds like a really separate conversation, in my opinion, Mr. Chair, and it might be more than happy to, but let's remember, not every agency around you does or doesn't have a PD, an MSP post, et cetera. So, there's an area of responsibility that our, our office holds that not every sheriff's office holds. There is many sheriff's offices around us that don't have twenty-four hour coverage. That's a reality, ours does, because of the management, et cetera. I understand, but when you make comments like we have, you make it sound like we're egregious in what we have, no, I.
I didn't say you were egregious. I didn't say that.
Then, then what, if we have personnel and I can't put enough officers in schools to dedicate to them, then we're not at the staffing level, we can, we can, we can succeed in our mission. So, the, the comment makes no, it doesn't have any bearing. Yes, we have, we have fifteen officers, I need more, I need more to service these folks. That's what I need, and I'm just asking for the commitment.
Well, we have to look at the budget, right, really, we're still in that area, how much are they gonna cost us?
Okay, I, I understand that, that's your hangup. So, what are we gonna do to move forward?
Let's board's just.
Gary, Gary.
I'd like to say something.
Gary, let's talk. The, the issue in the sheriff's board, he mentioned, excuse me, he had mentioned how bad it was that we lost a child in Lewiston yesterday. How would we feel, losing my voice, how would we feel if we lost a, a child in a stu, in a school and sat here and didn't do a thing?
I'm telling you, these last two days have been hell. Then, I can't stress enough, that's my biggest fear. Um, we're dealing with kids that, that need adults to guide them and to be there for them. Um, I was a little late today because I was dealing with an issue. I walk in every day, I love my school, I've got a great staff, they come in every day and get a hundred and ten percent. My children are there, my grandchildren are there. My biggest fear is that I'm, that I'm gonna be put in a situation.
And we have no staff trained, but this is a great opportunity, these grants plus what the schools are willing to put in from their own budgets would pay for eighty-five percent of the cost. And so we, and we can run the numbers, I have a finance background, so I know the numbers really well. Um, at the very least, I, what I ask you to do is let, uh, post the positions, or post the posi, just to get the word out, just by posting a position doesn't mean you need to hire anybody, you can post positions, et cetera. You know, and then, and then you can have your committee meet with the schools or whatever you wanna do and, um, work out the numbers, and if they don't work out, well, we'll have to figure something out, but, um.
We've all committed money towards adding school resource officers. Not only that, we've committed money to adding counselors and people doing work that we never thought our schools would have to do. We provide more mental health care within our walls than our communities have outside. We have so much work to do with our kids to get them to be safe contributing adults, and we need the support to do that. That six-year-old died in that fire, another six-year-old carried a gun to school. We live in a community that we need to educate kids on gun safety too.
Can this be referred to one of the committees? Because they would have to look further into it anyway.
Sure.
The sheriff's, because you have to look at numbers.
Yeah, I just like a breakdown of the board of money.
Right.
I'm not anxious to waste this money, that, this grant money that's available, I mean, that's.
It's a good, good chunk.
Absolutely.
Continuing down the road.
It's a guarantee for three years. My, and I've been in education a long time, my feeling is that this money's not going anywhere. I can't promise you, they, I can't promise you that today, they promised me three years, but they promised me thirty-one M. money for three years and I'm, I'm still getting it. I, I feel like this is something, something that will be there. Secondly, I always think of A through Z, 'cause that's what I have to do. If this funding's not available, I now am gonna have data and proof of what an SRO officer does in my building, I'm willing to go to my board and let's go, let's go to the village. Let's go, we'll figure it out. Um, this is important enough for me to give a teacher up, this is important enough for me to promise them, figure out how I can continue to do it after three years.
April.
From all the conversation, I mean, I do believe the understanding is that all of the commissioners are not against putting SRO officers in, it's just doing the logistics to find out how we can do it. So, I think your answer is, could you get an SRO, SRO officer is yes, they wanna do that, it's just we need to find the logistics now of how to make it happen. Could we use other funds, could we use officers we currently have, could we hire one instead of two, could we use grant funds that we have, could opioid settlement money be utilized for an SRO officer? There's a lot of things we can talk about logistically about how making this happen, so I don't, their answer is yes, I, I think they all have seen the board.
Yeah, I just like, I'd like a firm answer on money.
Yeah.
What's it gonna cost us?
It's the logistics in general, I mean, just how you can make it happen.
You just started, this might be, we just started trying to save money for retiree healthcare, just started. And, and my fear is that we're not, we're gonna take that money out in ten years, so now all these people start retiring, we're not gonna be pot for them.
Right.
So that's kind of been my priority, but everything else coming up, we might not be able to save money for it. I don't know how this is gonna shake out ten or twenty years from now. That's gonna be up, uh, and they have to be up to the board at that time, what they do, if they can do anything.
If I could be, if I could be stingy, I care about my kids today.
Well, I, I do too, but these people care about retiree healthcare too.
And that's been going on for.
I know, twenty, and we have twenty years away for it.
And, and I, I appreciate the fiscal responsibility this county has exhibited in, I'd say probably the last fifteen years especially. I think overall, it's done a very good job. Um, but it's, it's, again, if we go back to the commitment from the board, this is about priorities, and there is, the, the budget is, it's a, it's a large moving ocean all the time, and yes, I, I eventually would like to retire, and I'd like to know that everybody that retires is taken care of, that's, that's one thing we have to, to make sure happens. But, again, to Dr. Rader's thing, providing public service and public safety is really important too, so we, we just, I think there's a whole lot of funds in our budget, let's be honest. There's a lot of things in our budget, so let's look at the whole budget. To, to the controller's point, maybe there's another grant that can help subsidize some of this, whatever it is, there, you know, whatever, the county asset, county improvement fund, there's monies that we have in different locations that maybe can be looked at and utilized and, and, and take care of people, I guess, provide safety for our children. I mean, if there's not, probably the, the most Neanderthal thing we do is take care of our kids, and that's what I'm asking the board to commit to, is, is let's look at it, let's establish the committee, whatever it is, but let's, let's be very persistent in what we do.
So for the last year, we've heard numerous of times that nobody's applying for any of these officers' positions, so where are we gonna get these two people from if we can't get anybody to even apply for your officers' positions?
Well, that's gonna be my problem, but obviously, it's, I, I can't post for something that doesn't exist. I mean, we, we already, we have, we, we have an officer that is reasonably new, and again, because he's, we have remarkable people, he's put together a PowerPoint presentation, and we're gonna be sending him and maybe one of us to the academies to present, to kind of brag the office. Nothing that's, sheriff, you know, that's nothing we ever had to do. Back in the day, you had nineteen recruits, none of them had jobs, and you had to pick the letter. That's not the case. Now you have nineteen cadets, and eighteen of them are sponsored and already have a job. Yes, that is gonna be our problem. We're working on problem solving that already. Deputy Watson's put together a fantastic presentation that we plan on going out to area academies and present at high schools. That's another part of that SRO, is this, this, this profession has been villainized to some extent, in my opinion, and it's time to start promoting it again and make it as honorable as it is. So, whole other story, but nonetheless, that is something we're currently problem solving, and people on our team are already working on that.
Okay, 'cause I was just, 'cause at one time, we had approved for you to have, but you weren't getting any.
You're correct, yeah.
And so that's my question, I guess you wanna hire two SROs, but if you can't even get anybody to apply, how are you gonna do it?
And we're working on that, yeah.
It was suggested that we could post the position in advance, does that make any sense at all?
To me, yes, absolutely. I mean, it's, it's, I believe it was.
Soon as we get it posted.
Totally hit set it. I, I have no, um, to put, to put two positions out there to say that we're hiring, understanding that because it's posted doesn't mean we're hiring, because I can't do that without your folks' permission. But at least then I can, we can start getting that word out there and, um.
Would the posting be specifically then for this position?
No.
Or are you just general?
No, just general.
And I have people there serving now that would wanna go into those positions.
Exactly, that's exactly right, yeah, 'cause that's something, again, we'd like to look at collaborating with the schools on, uh, you know, SRO's a special position, so I, I'm not gonna say, we're not hiring an SRO, we're hiring an officer, and then we're identifying who are assigning an SRO, so. But yeah, I mean, with the, the authority to at least post for the positions and start obtaining resumes, um, with the expectation that it'll take at least thirty days, I'm sure.
I'd make a motion that, um, that could go to the personnel sheriff committee.
Okay.
I don't have any problem with them posting it either, if I wanna, if we wanna add it to the.
You want to add your motion?
We'll make it to one motion, or you want to?
Who do you want?
Well, I don't even know what you're trying to do.
Do something, just, uh, refer it to the sheriff's committee.
The SRO positions.
On that, and move on. The motion?
So your motion is that the SRO position go where? Go to?
That we, no, that we take this issue, the SRO, to the sheriff, to the sheriff's committee. Finance Personnel Sheriff's Committee for review.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, that's just for the, for the sheriff's committee, correct?
Right.
All right, so I, I have some questions about that. So the sheriff's committee then would just be two of us?
What is the sheriff's committee anymore?
Huh?
I don't even know what the sheriff's committee is anymore, we changed it to the FOP or F?
We're, we're good.
It's the same as the finance.
It's before or after finance, it's the same day. We're on that one too, we're on finance and sheriff's committee.
So, is that something that two of us can deal with, or do you think?
Well, I don't know, three, we, we can do the whole board, I mean, I'm not even up to it.
Somebody to take minutes is all.
That's, that's fine with me, we both gonna have to have someone from the court's office, you know, administer the, I have no problem with that.
Well, they could do a study meeting instead.
No.
No, it's still gotta, it's still a public meeting, it's still a special meeting, it still has to be clerked.
Right.
I'll argue that all day long with you. No, I know, I can say that. It's gotta be clerked. I wasn't saying it didn't need to be clerked, but if you want the whole board opinions of it, and it's gonna be a pretty in-depth conversation, we would better do that.
Well, they can go to the committee for that conversation, then it could come to whatever, but the committee.
I, forget it, it's such a big deal, like the whole board should be talking about it, not just one or two people. Forget it, it's such a big deal, like the whole board should be talking about it, not just one or two people.
That's my notion.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of my notion still because everyone here, that's same time, you know, the ends of the pros and cons. So I don't like the committee process for a lot of things, this is one of them.
At the schools, we do things called workshops. We'll have a board workshop if it's a big topic like that, that you all want to be involved in. It has, does still have to be an open meeting, but it's, it's a board workshop.
Right.
And you only work on that.
They can only work on that.
And I guess the clerk's issue is if we have, we all meet together for anything, call it you want, we need a clerk.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely. And we don't have a problem. I mean, we got to find a time that we can do that, obviously.
I will commit to come and bring whatever numbers I can. I don't know what, what it costs, that's something that, that the sheriff will get together, but I'll come and I'll be happy to support.
Well, the sheriff can figure out a lot of it, the equipment, the cars and all that and other stuff, you know, and wages and many, he's got all that.
You're looking for what the schools are able to contribute, that's your question?
Well, the total package, you got to come up with the total package and then the school's going to offset my X.
Correct.
That's, that's what I'm looking for.
And get the input from the superintendent.
Absolutely, that's all, yeah, yeah, yeah. Just after, you want to try to do a meeting today or something up now or?
I think we got to come up with a date.
Well, right now you have a motion on the floor.
Right. So we would need to change the motion to do a study session rather than just a sheriff's committee.
Just a method motion.
Well, why don't you just recall your motion.
I'll recall my motion.
And who would second it?
I'll take my second.
Okay, now someone wants to make a motion to have a, I guess a study, special meeting or, I guess a special meeting, probably more after.
Study session.
Study session, is that a good?
Whatever, do you want to?
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we have a, that we set a date for a study session. Officer.
I have a question. Would it be feasible to take two road officers right now and fill those two positions immediately? And then go into our discussions about filling two more positions?
That would sound like it. I'm not sure if you, can you use existing personnel for those questions?
Yeah, you can.
You, you could, but.
You could, and that was kind of the same question that the treasurer had, had posed. And we're not at a staffing level where we can dedicate two human, two bodies to two schools. We don't have personnel. And still have, and still have somebody on road. Correct. We don't have enough people to do it. I wouldn't be able to dedicate officers to, to the schools and still have road coverage for complaints.
Well, what are we looking at for a study session?
I don't have a second to motion, so.
I have done, I made the motion to set the date for a study session, but I don't have a second.
Now we have a second too. All in favor of that motion, say yes.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, most clear. Now we have to come up with a date.
Don doesn't come back till when?
Huh?
Witness now come back?
I don't know.
I'll be back on the sixth. So anytime after that, I'd be one, but. Like a one o'clock, like today, is that late enough for most?
A little later.
What date you looking at? Um, I'm. Yeah, I wrote the other one down, I just didn't look at it.
You looking at the eighth, maybe?
Yeah. I did, I mean.
I can't do it on Wednesday.
You want to go to night?
Thursday to night? No?
No, I've got a board meeting with mental health.
Morning or night, morning or afternoon?
Yeah, this one's in the afternoon.
Okay.
So I do have the morning open, how about you?
No, Thursday morning, no.
It's a board meeting day, isn't it?
Not tonight, it's the sixteenth.
It's board meeting day?
Second sixteen.
Uh.
We don't have a second, Mary.
What?
We don't have one second, today's the second.
Right, I'm saying this.
Tenth would have to be in the afternoon.
About the seventh.
How about the sheriff's?
Seven?
Well, is the, is the seventh Tuesday completely out of the question? Tuesday to seven?
Not for me.
I'm very flustered.
I can't do it.
What about sheriff?
The tenth of the morning, no, I'm out at Montmorency Township doing an election audit and I don't know how long that's going to take, so. Maybe in the afternoon.
I think we're talking afternoon.
Yeah, I think they're talking like at one o'clock.
I don't know, I know, but it's going to take several hours and I have to hand count out four hundred and some ballots, so. Did the sixth work?
No, that, no.
Okay, that was not, yeah.
Okay. And you're going to be, well, I can send Lori up here, I'll.
What day you looking at?
On the tenth.
We're looking at.
If I'm not back, I guess I can have Lori at least when you start it. Okay. I'll just tell her, don't get so.
Tenth at one.
One o'clock?
Go with the tenth?
Yes, at one.
And this will, I'm sorry, this will be just a work session for SRO, correct? Yes. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, work session for the, the two officers we were talking about.
Okay.
That gives you enough time to get the dollars and cents.
Did you pass that motion?
No.
We're still talking about it, right?
We got the date.
Oh, I'm sorry, you did pass the motion, yes, now you're just.
Thank you. So we got a date set?
The tenth? Tenth at one o'clock.
Okay. I, I move that the sheriff hosts those two positions hopes that we can get the logistics worked though.
We have a motion, we have a second, same discussion on the motion. Chair, you can call for a vote, all the papers say yes.
Yes.
Yes, most agree.
Thank you, officer.
Okay, so we beat that to death, we knew mine.
Till the next meeting, yeah.
Right, let's, next day to mine there, without the positions, we're done with that, I guess we're down to vehicles.
Yeah, and, you know, again, we, we, I don't know, obviously we keep going to the dollars and cents, so I don't know if this is going to be a continuing conversation during the SRO portion, but, you know, we're still looking to obtain one vehicle. If, if we ordered it today, lordly knows when that vehicle arrived, probably the end of this year. But we have vehicles that are high mileage that, as the sheriff, as the chairman knows, stuff happens. I mean, we had a vehicle in, in warranty repair for nearly two weeks and then you have a car deer accident, now you're down to, I mean, it's a part of our, it's like an ambulance, I mean, if you don't have, if you don't have the ability to train, to get to places, it doesn't work. And the, the more we, we fall behind on maintaining our fleet, the more difficult it's going to be to catch up. And instead of buying one, you're going to need two or you're going to need three, so it's just, it's a, it's a PM thing that we have to continue to, we're just asking for one vehicle at this point. I'm assuming I know what the answer is from the chair, but it's, it's something that's needed. It's, it's a, that is a tool for this trade and it's necessary, is to maintain a healthy and strong fleet.
Well, you could take your, your lowest mileage, use those as patrol vehicles.
Sure, you can always do that, but as you know, I mean, you, you've got a five hundred fifty-six square mile county here. It doesn't, when you start running vehicles twenty-four hours a day, three hundred sixty-five days a year, your low mileage vehicle is no longer your low mileage vehicle and you're lucky to get two years out of it. That's why there has to be that consistency in bringing on new vehicles into the fleet. I mean, we have vehicles, we have multiple vehicles that are a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five thousand miles that are still, they're good vehicles, patrol-ready vehicles, but that's a remarkable amount of mileage on a, an emergency vehicle. But we do the very best we can to make sure that they're all serviceable. We have an excellent mechanic and they make sure it's, it's service ready, so. But the farther we, we go behind and the longer we go without purchasing vehicles, you're going to see those old vehicles, those old mileage vehicles are now at fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand miles. And now you're looking at two vehicles because you had one break down, because you had one get in a car crash because of whatever the reason. It's, it, it, it's, it's maintenance.
The parts budget, the repair.
Oh, yeah, and that, yeah, the parts budget is going to be another thing, obviously that got reduced this year, but with older vehicles comes generally more repairs, whether that's wheel bearings or tie rods and et cetera, et cetera. Those things are now wear and tear items and now we're wear and tearing them two times over. They're not, you know, it, it ends up being more expensive and you're repairing more often. So it is something that I would, I'd like it again considered that we, we have to stay on track to, to purchase just one patrol vehicle this year. Again, with the understanding that the, we've been fortunate enough to not have to take one out of the general fund for a long, long time. That has, has come out of the village historically since its inception.
With the board's, where are you? Well, I'm inclined, like the sheriff said, to try to get through this other issue first. We understand what your needs and wants are, but let's try to get through the, the SRO officer and there'll be a lot of numbers that come up that will help us send that as well.
Though, it'll probably be a symbiotic relationship as far as during the conversation, just so we all are aware of that.
Yeah, I don't have any motions.
No motion to be accepted, let's do that, and you're going to put a package together.
Certainly.
For us, and then you're going to do the offset, whatever that is. So move to that meeting, so.
Certainly.
On the tenth, okay.
I have one request to go with the SRO. Dr. Rader, Superintendent, I forgot your name, Mr. Tony, Tony. Could you tell us to, could you have something, what that SRO officer is going to do in the school?
I have a job description.
Perfect, perfect, we'd like to see what that day would look like and you're, yes, thank you.
I will say there's no typical day.
Of course not, of course not.
Then I, then I did a job description.
Yeah, so we could have that and when you come to.
Do you have numbers prior to the meeting so we can?
Yeah, I was going to say, if you want to email them to either A. one O. I. and we can get them to the board so at least they have something that they can look at before the meeting and be a little educated.
Wouldn't we send all of our information to the sheriff and then he sends it to you? And the board table?
Even with your best understanding and then you can always, you know, present it.
And then because he may send it back to us and say, I need a little more information on such and such, so we don't send it directly to the board.
I, my assumption is the grants are tied in with the two officers, is that my assumption?
I didn't put the grants on there, but yeah, I, I assume that might have been part of the conversation.
Were you paid question?
Oh, yeah, I was, I guess it was brought to us that you pay them about thirty-five dollars an hour now for ORV and stuff?
Correct.
That's quite high to other counties, you know that.
It's time and, it's essentially time and a half.
That's what we calculate.
That's what we, that's what historically it's been when we, when we calculate the.
But you got people that's not, you got people working that that's not full-time officers.
Uh, not really, not many, but yes, there's the ability.
What are you paying them, I guess?
The same, if they're an M. coal certified officer, that's what, that's what they're, they're paid. And that, that wage is time and a half, so if I have Friday off and I want to work ORV, I'm essentially, and that's not, that's not a county rate, I mean, that, that comes one hundred percent out of the mill, out of, out of the grant.
We understand that.
Okay, so that's, that's where that rate comes from, that's why it adjusts is we've, we've always, I mean, I think it was going on even when you were there. Generally, it stays at about time and a half because it's off, off duty or after-hours work.
Well, the grant doesn't stay how much you pay, the grant just gives you reimbursement a hundred percent of those funds and in Marines, what, eighty-five hundred dollars for the last year? So you get that money to offset expenses you would utilize for those patrols.
Correct.
But it doesn't set the rates because all the counties set their rates.
That's correct.
They set, a lot of the counties around us are setting them between twelve to fifteen to sixteen and upwards or they sign somebody within duty to do it.
Okay.
So the thirty-five was a little high and last year, the grant we got for that was eighty-five hundred dollars, but yet the expenses were over twelve thousand, so the money is not being covered by the grant full.
And I don't, when, even when, Don, you were sheriff, the one thing we had talked about especially specifically to Marine was the millage would cover some of those costs if it went beyond specifically for the Marine.
The patrol vehicle?
Marines, for the lakes. Because that, that established under you, is, is what I, that's how I remember it.
Where do we think that out, where you take that out now? Because we.
Well, we, if, if, if the budgeted, if the, if the expenses exceed the state, well, that's actually a federal grant, but if it exceeds the federal grant for Marine.
And you take it out of?
I think generally it was millage if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I didn't get involved in that, but just so you know, that's only for M. coal's officers, for Marine.
Right.
Or non-M. coal's, don't make that.
The, not M. coal's were left at, I don't remember what it got about that.
Sorry, I think it was.
Because Marine's the only one that you can be non, non-certified.
Yeah, that's less than thirty-five an hour.
That one is, yes, yeah. But the other two, the, for ORV and snowmobile, they have, you have to be M. coal certified to, to work it, to patrol it, that's a state law.
Brad?
When you were the sheriff, if you recall, Don, you and I were struggling to get people to work the grant patrols because sometimes overtime out there, of course, they would choose the higher rate of the overtime. We were struggling to get people to patrol those, that's why you and I raised those rates.
How it's getting out there, that when we get to have money, there's not a lot for patrol when you get down there. If you run two guys at thirty-five bucks a day plus the FICA and all that other stuff, it's like a hundred dollars an hour.
Well, on Marine, we actually cover the whole summer quite well. Uh, ORV, we do very well for two. Snowmobile, we're giving about fifteen hundred dollars, which is a couple of weekends, but with the amount of snow that we don't get anymore.
It's not an issue. That, because that ORV grant is twenty-two-ish, right? I mean, the, the ORV grant, the year-round ORV grant, that's a twenty-two thousand dollar grant. Mind you, that's all encompassing.
And I could wait day patrol as well.
Right.
Any questions or?
The Marine grant is just eighty-five hundred?
It varies, but that's what, I believe that's a approximate award, this, yeah.
So that limits us mostly to just weekends?
Holiday weekends, yeah. Because at one point in time, we've had some lake associations actually approach, I think, Don, you were sheriff then, had we, we'd have lake associations approach us.
They, 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 they.
Yep.
Any other questions concerned? Okay. Oh, laptops?
I'm going to scratch that one off because we worked with I.T. last Friday about looking at all the computers to see what we can get something set up. Probate court wanted to get a community laptop set up down by the court system so that people could come in and, and check on cases and information. So we're just, we're going through our whole list of assets basically to see if we have something we can set up for that. So we'll just, we can table that for now because I.T. is looking at everything for us.
And ask for the probate court?
Yeah.
It would be for all the courts, I mean, it'd be public use basically.
Public use, right, for all the courts. What did we get, we had to set something before we went into?
Policy. Policy study.
Yeah, that's a toughie. What, what do we got, the one for the sheriffs, you know, I didn't want to tag on that because well, the last one, we got through three questions in two hours, so I don't know how we're going to do that.
Well, we were just approaching it for the areas that people had concerns about.
Well, I think the other will go fast, the state law and federal law, I mean, who's going to, I don't think there'd be much comment there, right? Would be like.
Well, do we want to go as far as we can?
Today? Have I kept the board a good consensus, you want to do a little bit on policies?
Oh, I got places to go.
You're not, you're not coming back to this?
Uh-huh. We're talking about right now, we've got one person that can't stay.
Well, I mean, I just, if you weren't coming back to it, I'd have left a long time ago.
Okay, well, I don't know what the board wants to do, Debbie.
Did you have particular questions?
I have one policy I want to talk about.
You can let me have a lot of it.
Yeah, we'll do a few here.
Okay, I'm looking at.
I can stick around for another.
What policy, that should take forever.
No, the one I have won't take forever.
What page are you going to be on?
You know, mine pages did.
You know, mine page is, I think it's fifty-nine, maybe, it's six point one five, employer provided cell phone, mobile devices. The biggest thing, the biggest problem that I have with it, I guess, is paragraph three, it says, "The county owns and remains entitled to all cell phone, mobile devices issued to employees, including all passwords controlling access to them. You may not change the passwords except with permission. At the, at the time the employment terminates, all such equipment and passwords must be returned to the county." Um, I think both mine and as well as Kristen's, both of us have cell phones. Um, we're on a government plan through Verizon, so we're able to get cell phones, um, updated pretty frequently at a very reduced rate.
But they're your own cell phone?
Pardon?
Are them your own cell phones?
No, they come, they're built through the county, the county bill, although I think both Kristen and I have, um... Sometimes they're free, the, the base phone is free, and I guess both of us have updated them, so we provided, we paid in to get a, a slightly better phone. My concern is this, is that the county can't, you can't have access either to the password or the phone, just because in both of those positions, there's a lot of confidential information that's on the phones.
And you're subject to subpoena or FOIA if that came to that, correct?
Yes, and I think what, in the past, because it's this government plan, the phones are really at, at no, or very limited cost to the county, if at all. So, um, I would ask that, at least, you know, for those two offices, um, it's a slightly different situation, just because of the amount of confidential information that is used in terms of those phones. So I think for those two offices, we would ask that they be excluded from this particular policy.
Okay, now let me ask, let me ask this, how many more cell phones, government cell phones do we have out there?
So this is a blanket policy that came from Mineral. I can honestly say I didn't go through this one, but if I did go it off...
I don't think they have two cell phones as far as I know.
And just put our names in. So currently, we just have, um, we have two accounts through the county, and one houses the prosecutors and the magistrate's cell phone, and then hotspots in the judges. And then we have another one that has a couple of hotspots on it, and then we're adding a phone for the emergency manager. Um, and, uh, see, the building inspector, we reimburse him, so he kept his personal phone number, and we just give him a reimbursement instead of him being on the county plan. And then, um, right now Joe's our soil erosion, so he has a hotspot on that plane. So that's what's currently going on. Like I said, this was just a blanket policy from Mineral.
Yeah, I think we could just, uh, either add a thing in there, that's, the exclusion would be prosecutor and/or the court systems,